Harrison Planning Commission Public Hearing. We have two, correct, to go through. So first property that we are going to talk about is the PUD Preliminary Plan for 10400 Harrison Avenue. Joit, are you?
The reason for this request is the application must be reviewed by the, and approved by Planning Commission per Section 114310 of the Harrison Zoning Regulations, which lists the applicant shall submit a preliminary development plan describing the project in detail to the Planning Commission. The intent of the project, excuse me, the intent of the project is the applicant is requesting the approval of a PUD biz overlay on a B general business zone property to develop a retail development. Page two shows the plan, which you'll see in just a second. The land use capability, the proposed use is located within a B general business zoning district and is surrounded by other B general business zoning businesses. Please see the, I'm so sorry, you'll see the information that they brought when they do the presentation. The land use capability, it is compatible with the existing adjacent non-residential uses. The proposed use is consistent with the intent of the zoning code and to provide business uses to meet the needs of the regional market. Proposed building elevations have been submitted that meet the city's building design standards. The proposed use will not be hazardous or disturbing to existing or future neighboring uses. The proposed use will not involve activities that will be detrimental to the area. Vehicle access will be strategically planned out and no negative traffic impacts are expected. The location, size, and intensity of the use is appropriate for the property in the area. The comprehensive plan goals, strategies, and recommendations. Number one is to recruit the retail, restaurant, and entertainment environments that will enhance community and quality of life experience. Number two is continue to recruit national and international businesses to the area. And number three is fill the demand for additional convenience retail and restaurants along Harrison Avenue. The PUD terms which go outside of the zoning code would be certain conditional uses were moved to permitted uses, and that's Exhibit A, and I will get that for you. And number two is increase in amount of square footage of signage on the property and the signs themselves. A summary and recommendation, the application has been reviewed by the Harrison Building, Planning, and Zoning staff, and no further recommendations were made for approval. The application was also reviewed by the city engineer with general site comments that will be addressed before the presentation of the final plan. The application meets the criteria outlined in the Harrison Zoning Regulations for the PUD Preliminary Development Plan and the goals, strategies, and recommendations of the city's comprehensive plan. After review of the application, Planning Commission will vote to recommend full approval, approval with conditions, or denial to City Council. A development agreement will be created and signed by the city and the applicant outlining the terms of the PUD biz overlay and presented for approval by City Council with the final development plan.
We have William Mees, John Silverman, and Brian O'Toole here from Midland Atlantic.
Good e, oh, did we lose our presentation already?
Oh, it's okay. It's touchy.
Excellent. All right, good evening, and thank you for having us. My name is Brian O'Toole, Development Manager for Midland Atlantic. Also with us here tonight is John Silverman, our Managing Principal. We are here to present our preliminary development plan for your approval. It's great to be here with you guys again. We're here back in, back in July to present our conceptual development plan. Since then, the, everything with the development has progressed well, and we're excited to share the updates to the plan based on conversations that-
Could you speak more into the microphone?
I'm sorry, sir. Is that better?
A little bit.
Jerry, you want to come down here?
So, excited to share the updates to the plan. We'll go through our proposed development in more detail. I'm going to start pretty high level with the site plan of, you know, what we plan to do, and then we'll drill down further into, into the details and go into things like the building elevations and all that fun stuff. So, looking at this nice color version of the, of the site plan, moving from left to right, what we plan to do is build a 205,000-square-foot shopping center. It's going to be anchored by a national retail, large-scale retailer on the, on the left-hand side, and then on the right, there's going to be an additional 75,000-square-foot shopping center. That will have additional junior anchors. Buildings B and C will be, will be national junior anchors. Buildings D and G will be mini anchors, if you will, and then buildings E, F, and H will be shop space. This will likely be subdivided further, further down to about 1,500 square feet as its smallest. Building H, that will, what we currently envision to be a, will be a restaurant with a, with an exterior patio for outdoor dining as well. The out parcels, moving from right to left, on the far right, we've, we envision that being a sit-down restaurant. Across the, that Site Drive 3, it's labeled on the next slide, that we envision to be a bank, next to that, a coffee, and on the far left will be an additional bank. So, we are, we are not speculative developers. As we mentioned last time, we are here because the, our anchor tenant asked us to come here. They, they've had their eyes on Harrison for a long time, and they really want to, want to be here, and we're very excited about it. They're, they're very excited. This is their first new project that they've done in Ohio in about a dozen years. So it's, it speaks very highly of Harrison. The other, again, the, the other junior anchors, those are also, you know, national tenants, high-quality businesses that really want to be here as well. The demand from, from the tenants has been, has been great. As we talked about last time, everybody wants to be in Harrison. So, we're, we're very excited about the, about the tenant lineup. So, not as fun to look at, but this is our, our civil engineered plan. Talking more about some of the developmental aspects of, of the plan. So it'll have four, four entrances into the, into the shopping center, one on West Road, two signalized entrances on, on Harrison Avenue, and then one off of Gainesview. The, the parking will meet your requirements, will have just over 1,000 parking spaces. Parking ratio will be 4.21 per thousand. The layout complies with your zoning requirements as well, and all of the, all of our intended uses fit within the business, your, your general business zoning for, for the area. Couple other things wanted to highlight here. As with all of our projects, our service areas, you know, loading docks in the back, those will all be screened to the rear. The, the trash enclosures will be cement, look a little nicer. We find that that helps them look better for a longer period of time. Just in general, the development will be maintained to, to a very high level. We are, we are a long-term holder. We're not a merchant builder, and we're not the kind of company that comes in, is just going to come and build it and sell it, and you'll never hear from, from us again, for better or for worse. If we're fortunate enough to get your, your approval for this plan, you'll be stuck with us for, for a long period of time. And we have, we have in-house property management. As our, as John likes to say, we're, we're an overhead machine, so we will have in-house property management, will manage the center to, to a very high standard. We'll have onsite, an onsite maintenance person to give our tenants, you know, a very high level of, of service as well. More fun things, site utility, prepared a utility plan for, for SUI, for all the utilities. We corresponded with your, your fire inspector, Mr. Matt Nichols. Also very fun things to talk about, we have a drainage, drainage plan to take into account the unique soil conditions here, here in Harrison, and we've planned for a series of dry wells. All right, now into actually more, more fun things. Looking at the, talking about the architectural theme and the, the design guidelines for the development, we had our architects, KBA, put together a, an architectural theme for, for the project. And as with every project, we believe very strongly and pay a lot of attention to the, the user experience, the shopper experience, and it's little things that go into, you know, having a cohesive, you know, architectural theme that finds that, you know, it's really how you create places and keep people coming back to the center for a long period of time. So what we've gone, what we envisioned here is to have, you know, it's going to be contemporary, but, you know, take inspiration from the historical aspects of Harrison. So you might recognize some of these buildings, they're pictures that our architects pulled off of, you know, buildings that here in the historic part of Harrison. We're going to take inspiration from those and get an idea of the types of materials that, that we plan to use, the type of color palette, be more, you know, neutral tones with, with pops of color. And then we'll also be incorporating aspects of different, different Midland projects that we, that we've thought turned out, turned out well. So from there, we got into the architectural elevations. These again are still preliminary, they're going to be continued to be refined as we finalize our tenant lineup, but this is, you know, where, where we're at so far. I wanted to talk again about some of the other pedestrian and streetscape aspects of the, of the development. So in addition to the, the architectural theme, a big piece of, you know, creating a shopping center that the people will keep coming back to is having, you know, a nice streetscape. So the, the streetscape in front of the shopping center, that's going to be wide, wide sidewalks with inset paver stones, and I'll show some pictures of kind of some of the hardscape features that, you know, we plan to use here in a second. But so there'll be nice site lighting, decorative lighting in between. So as I mentioned earlier, on the end cap of building H, that's going to be a patio for outdoor dining. In the, in, in front of building E, there's going to be a courtyard with a, with a fountain and, and outdoor seating. And then at the intersection of West Road and Harrison Avenue, we'll have a corner feature with a, with a fountain as well. And then we're going to have two monument signs, one at the, at the main entrance with Site Drive 2, which is directly across from the Kroger, and then a smaller version of that at Site Drive 3, and I have pictures of that that we'll show here in a, in a couple slides. But again, those are all aspects of the, you know, the shopper experience that we spend a lot of, a lot of time on and really nailing down the finer details. Just a couple pictures of the type of, you know, hardscape aspects that, that we, we plan to use. We make sure that, you know, the, the posts and the trash cans and the benches and all those things, they go together. We want to make sure that, you know, it's the little touches like that that kind of ties everything together in a nice cohesive manner. The pavers will be, you know, inset within the sidewalks, and on all of the, the regulatory signs, they'll be a little nicer that, you see the, the design kind of on top of the, the street sign aspect and how it's, the stop sign is framed. Still little touches like that that we plan to, to bring here to Harrison. We created a landscape plan. The goal with this is, as with all of our centers, is to create a, an environment that, you know, really kind of have a nice front door and a nice visual to the center. You'll notice we've got, the entire center is very, intended to be very well landscaped, but especially at Site Drive 2 and Site Drive 3, as well as along Gainesview Road. Again, to really kind of give it a nice entrance into the scenery, into the shopping center. The, the overall intention will be, will have a lot of, you know, evergreen shrubs and trees that will, you know, give the, give the development color throughout the year. Then we'll also have a nice assortment of, of annual flowers in the spring and summer to have a nice pop of color. Designed a photometric plan for the, the site lighting. It's designed to ensure that the entire site is evenly and safely lit and to make sure that there's no spillage onto the street or neighboring properties. Our signage plan, so on the left, that will be the, the large sign that's located at Site Drive 2, which is what we envisioned to be the, the main entrance into, into the site. It will have the, the name at the top of it. This was just, this was a preliminary drawing and will be refined a little bit further. And the name of the center, we intend to be Harrison Town Center. So that will be, be changed to reflect, reflected on the top. The anchor tenant will be the first, the first sign below the, below that, and then our other junior anchors and mini anchors will, will be below there as well. Located at Site Drive 3 will be a smaller version of, of that sign, and then we'll have a single-tenant monument sign at each of the four out parcels. The signage was designed to be, you know, high-quality building materials and match the, the elevations of the buildings, again, to make sure everything looks nice and cohesive. That is all we have for you tonight. Thank you very much for, for your time, and if we're fortunate enough to, to gain your approval, we look forward to being a, a part of Harrison and continuing to, to work with you throughout this, this process. Be happy to answer any questions. Yeah, thank you.
Do we know when we'll know what type of, what name of stores we're going in, or is that going to be a hidden thing until after it's approved? I don't like voting on a pig in a poke, I've said that before.
Understood, sir. So at this time, we are, we're not able to disclose the names of, of the, of the tenants. They, they, we have to keep it confidential until after, they like to announce it when, when they can, but once it's, after that's, those have been approved, then we can share that with the public.
Will we, will we know the tenants before we vote?
Oh, before you vote tonight?
No, no, before, before the city council votes.
Oh, no.
We can whisper, no whisper to you.
You don't have to whisper it to me, you can talk loud, and I still can't hear you.
Let's talk about tenants. I, I was going to ask you about property maintenance and upkeep and everything, you touched on that, so thank you very much. Obviously, in a retail environment, and it's a problem here in the city, is vacancies in retail strip centers. When obviously, this is just a much bit different than some of the other stuff, but how long the leases are you having tenants sign, and what are the retention efforts to keep people in there? And then can you touch on marketing of space that may be available?
Yeah, absolutely, Mayor. The average, all the leases will be 10 to, 10 to 20-year leases. Our larger tenants will, will be 15 to 20-year leases, and the ground leases are all, the, excuse me, the ground leases are for the out parcels, those will all be 15 to 20-year leases. As far as the, the marketing efforts goes, every time that we, we look at coming to, doing a new development and coming to a new area, the first thing that we do is avoid analysis, and that's just a way of saying, we, we look at what's already in the area, and we just think through, you know, what other tenants would, would be a good fit in the area? What's, what's the area missing? What do we think could do well here? What does the community need? And that's how, how we start, our leasing, we have our own internal leasing team, and they, they've been reaching, having very active conversations with, with a lot of tenants. And then as far as, you know, dealing with empty space, you know, I think we will, you know, we're fortunate enough to gain your approval, I think the center will open fairly close to capacity. That's how strong leasing, pre-leasing activity has been.
And that was going to be one of my questions, will it be full? Because you, it's my understanding that you plan to build this entire development in one fair sweep, correct?
Except for the outlots. Correct. Yes, the, the intention is to build everything at, at the same time.
Because the outlots will be built by those specific-
Correct.
-institutions, correct?
Correct. And those outlots, they, in our conversation so far, they do intend to, to be open about the same time as the rest of the shopping center, but again, they'll, they'll be building their buildings themselves, so we have less control over that.
Has there been a traffic study done?
There has been a traffic study done. We submitted that to the city last week, and we're submitted to the city for approval or review and approval by, by JMA, and so we're waiting to be back.
We typically with a PUD development, we'll get variations from the general zoning characteristics or zoning requirements. What variations from base zoning are you guys asking for as far as your plan?
So as far as with the, the intended uses or the permitted uses in the PUD, the, so all of the uses, basically, we took a couple of the conditional uses, moved those into permitted uses. I don't recall off the, the top of my head, but we did submit a, a redlined version of, we started with your, with your uses, and we just redlined that, and we submitted that with our submission, so you can see everything that, that we changed.
That's in the email, that's in the email packet that I sent you. So you should have all that, but I can read it to you. That would be any automotive use, including automotive supply, gas stations, service stations, oil change, repair, car washes, wineries, breweries, distilleries, and tasting rooms, liquor stores with or, with or without drive-in or drive-through facilities, animal hospitals, veterinary clinics, no overnight stays, mixed-use residential with commercial office.
Those are crossed out?
No, those are things that were conditional uses that were added to permitted uses for the shopping center.
I don't know about that.
And there's some, that was just discussed probably 72 hours ago, so there is room for negotiation there as far as what, I think you guys threw everything at the wall to see what sticks, is kind of how it was put to me.
Yeah, we, we kind of wanted to take a broader, broader view. Yeah, if you'd like us to, to, you know, narrow, narrow that down a little bit, a little bit more, we'd be happy to take a look at that and take your feedback and perspective there.
Only because I have 48 automotive stores of varying degrees of what it is already in town.
All on Harrison Avenue.
That's why it immediately jumps out at me, and we've already had these conversations, so.
So I'm assuming this is not a, the anchor's not a spec where we're going to go out and try to get one? You've already talked to one and?
Correct.
Okay.
We would have sent them, I would have had that conversation.
I just don't want to see another building like out on the corner for two, a year and a half, two years, sitting vacant.
Yes, the, the anchor tenant, they, we have an agreement with the anchor tenant, and they have already set their opening date for, it's October 11th, or October, October 10th of 2027.
I'm good.
So just to let you know on these uses, once you're able to review those with the red lines, I sent you the list and the red line list, so once you're able to review those, you could recommend, you know, approval of this portion, and then we could finalize that in the final plan, just so you know that that's an option.
Very good, thank you. So we could, in other words, approve the preliminary just for the site plan, right? Is that what we're thinking tonight? And, and continue to work on-
Yes.
Like the condition, okay.
Because there's some civil corrections, for lack of a better word, that needs to happen too, from the city engineer that will be working on behind the scenes. This will all be in the development agreement or the PUD development agreement, so you'll know exactly what they're asking for in the PUD, what we're, what the give and take is. So you'll know that before we get to final.
Got it.
Anyone else?
I'm good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for your time, sir.
Thank you.
Oh, yes, are there any questions from the public? Would you please come up to the podium and state your name and your address? Would you please come up to the podium and state your name and your address?
Hi, my name is Pete Green. I live at fifteen twenty-eight Whitewater Trails Boulevard. The questions that I have are, one, how much traffic will this bring in on an average day? And then, two, what does the city get out of this? Do we get payroll taxes from jobs? Do we get earnings taxes from the business and property taxes? Do we, does Harrison benefit from this?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes is the answer to pretty much all of it. It just depends on, it depends on the individuals that work there, it depends on all of it. We are not offering any incentives. So we are creating a TIF district that will help pay for any infrastructure improvements. But other than that, we're not providing any incentives. We had a very clear conversation about that because we do need to make sure that we're able to pay for roads and, and everything along those lines. So there's an element of everything that you brought up in every project that can generate income for the city.
Okay.
And the only way these projects are viable is that offset towards the city to make sure that we pay for any infrastructure, police, fire, that's associated with it, absolutely everything.
Okay. Do, do you have any idea of the amount of traffic that will come in on an average day?
In the traffic study, I cannot remember. I was gonna say, I have not had an opportunity to see the traffic study yet, so I can't get, speak to that right now. But if you would like to write your name and phone number down or an email address, we can try to reach out to you and answer any other follow-up questions that you have in regards to.
I'll give it to you after the meeting, then?
Uh, yeah, just after the meeting. There's this clipboard over here, you can just write your name and phone number or email down.
Okay.
And then we can try to contact.
Good questions.
Thank you.
The traffic study, the link that was sent was bad, that's why you haven't received it yet?
Yeah, I was gonna say the link didn't.
Yeah. So I will send that again tomorrow. I got it late today, so I will send it back to you tomorrow.
Any other questions? All right, we're going to move on to.
Actually, sir, did you have a question?
Yeah.
If you don't mind stepping up to the podium.
Is that a snutter stoplight there on the exit out of Kroger that doesn't exist now? I heard two lighted.
It's the middle skyline, because there's where the fuel pumps are at Kroger, and then Taco Bell. There's the discussion to have a stoplight put there, but that's what the traffic study is, is gonna help us figure out. Because the, the, there'll be designated turn lanes, right in, if you're coming from the, I guess, southeast, so towards west.
As opposed to like an egress like is in front of the old Big Lots? You know, where you turn in that way and you only need that one.
We want designated turn lanes and stuff, so.
Yeah, I just remember.
The right-in, right-out on West Road is the only thing, I'm assuming that's the way that it's going. I think, I'm pretty sure that's a right-in, right-out on West Road. But the main entrances are all Harrison Avenue entrances.
Just remember talking about the other potential projects going on, on down the road.
Oh, on down.
And talking about not having a light at West, uh, off of Harrison, making a right turn only. But the reason that we didn't wanna have a light there was it was too close to Taco Bell's light.
Taco Bell's light.
But when I look at this, I, I don't see a huge difference, I haven't measured it, but just in my head, it doesn't seem like that big of a span. You understand what I'm saying?
I think that distance is, I, I understand what you're saying, because I was just there today. But I do think that's a little bit more distance than what is from Taco Bell's to.
To West.
The, the, well, definitely to West. But there was a proposed light at that potential new development there also. I think there's probably even more distance than to there.
Okay. It ju, it just sounded inconsistent with the prior conversations, is what I wanted to ask.
Good question.
And then just in general, is there, and maybe the link isn't a private third party and we don't wanna share that.
What's that?
Is there a reason why we couldn't, you guys couldn't share the link to the traffic study on the City of Harrison Facebook site?
No, we should, uh, when we get to a certain point, we can share it.
Yeah, I know there could be things on there, you know, that's.
Once the engineers look at it, then we could share it most likely.
It does.
Rather than have to take a guy's phone number and, you know, give him information, just share it with the whole community.
It does, it has to go through the review, through the engineer and everything along those lines. And then, once we're in some sort of agreement on the information that's in it, then it can be released from there.
Gotcha.
Because it becomes part of our file for this project.
Okay. And then I had a crazy idea when we were, when you were talking last time about the right turn potentially out of West. Although I'm winding way, so it kind of piques my interest.
Yes.
Going that way, and probably everyone will think it's crazy, but I don't know what the measurements are. But thinking about their space before you get to Kimba, there's the Conservative Financial Solutions. Is there room for a roundabout there that would be able to facilitate this project's needs? The needs of the people that come down West Road, and then also the potential project? And then also knowing that maybe you're going to five lanes? But just, I don't know if even dimensionally.
Well, it's funny that you bring that up, because I just drove through in the middle of Dublin, Ohio, right in the middle of, right after you cross the bridge, was it thirty-three coming down from Bell Fountain and Marysville? You're heading right into Dublin, and right in the middle of the major road, they put a roundabout, nice big roundabout. Now, everyone's gonna get mad, I haven't discussed it. But we do have it in front of our city engineer to talk about.
It seems like, yeah, you're, you're developing that gains view, I think that road is unurbanized, that road. That thing, and then you're talking about, you know, right turn only, I gotta go to Kroger, now I gotta go down here. And then thinking, well, if there's, if you just make it one big loop, that would, seems like it would solve a lot of issues that are at hand.
I think once people get accustomed and comfortable with roundabouts, I think roundabouts are a great viable option to keep traffic moving without a thousand stoplights.
Yeah. And with a man in the stoplight here, that's one less. I know that we weren't gonna put one there, but just.
The center entrance to the development wouldn't be a good stop. But on down, there's potential for something like that there.
Yeah. It's something, it's, you know.
It may never come to fruition, but.
But you got, you've got those two developments that are not that far apart. And each of them kind of have some needs, and they each affect traffic potentially, anyway.
Hopefully that roundabout would be a hell of a lot bigger than the schools.
It'd have to be, I think, yeah.
That one sucks, that's all it is.
Well, and if you have potentially two lanes going in this direction, if you're eventually, like you talked about, you need to get the five lanes anyway.
Well, that's why the one up in Dublin is, there's one over in Hamilton, there's a whole bunch of Fishers, Indiana, that they're four-lane roads, two lanes going each direction. And it's a two-lane roundabout with a third-lane straight turn option. So if you're coming down, you're immediately right.
Yeah.
There's two lanes actually that take a right. So there, there's a whole bunch of different options, it's just trying to figure out the best possible. We've accelerated Harrison Avenue's timeline to try and address it properly, infrastructure-wise, roadblocks. But it's still gonna take time.
By October twenty-twenty-seven?
No.
I kinda figured that was the answer.
Because that's Hamilton County, and Hamilton County will drive that unless we wanna pay for the whole thing.
Gotcha.
But from basically Taco Bell down to Dry Fork, that's a joint jurisdiction road with Harrison Township, Hamilton County. But Hamilton County will drive the freight train on that one. Which is the same situation that happened out on Edgewood. And you all realize how long Edgewood Road took.
I got just one last question. In general, you were talking about this other presentation that was done for a little bit down the road, down Harrison Avenue, I assume you're aware of it, I hope you are. But how do we look at that when you guys are doing an analysis of needs for retail and restaurants and different outbuildings? And then we're talking about going just literally a quarter mile down the road and having a very similar type of.
They will look at their project and they will make contact with businesses that they frequently deal with and fill vacant, vacant space and everything along those lines. The majority of the businesses that larger developers deal with are frequent flyers. If you're building in Harrison, you're probably building in Fairfield and wherever else, I don't know. North Carolina, I think that's where one of their developments was. But a lot of times, they'll frequent with the developer because they trust the product that they build. But they're gonna be completely separate from the other development. It's up to the other developer to find his tenants.
Sure, but I'm just kind of piggybacking on your, some of the concerns you guys expressed, which was vacancies and slow to fill and, and those type of things. And if you do an analysis and go, it looks like we got enough demand here, and then this guy's over here doing analysis, saying, hey, it looks like we got enough to fill here, and you don't have enough to fill both, we may not get what we think we're getting.
Oh, I'll ask the same question of the other developers as well. I wanna know, because I don't want another center that has three-quarters of it being vacant.
Right. So did you guys take that into account in your analysis?
So just as a, so we have forty-two shops in our portfolio. I'm really good with the Midwest and Southeast. And across all of those, we're, we're nice. So we're, we're very good at building space and making space in our portfolio. So we.
Would you mind answering the question? Did you take that into account, the, the other development going in potentially down the road?
There, we have a very attractive. We have more user access. Us, that is, we have plenty of.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Have a great evening.
Hey, there's one public hearing.
That concludes the first public hearing. The second one is for a conditional use permit approval for one oh five five eight Harrison Avenue.
The reason for this request is the applicant, the applicant must, the application must be reviewed and approved by Planning Commission per Section eleven forty-three oh five C four of the Harrison Zoning Regulation, which lists any automotive use, including automotive supply, gas stations, service stations, repair garages, car washes, and automotive sales and service as a conditional use. All proposed conditional use permits are reviewed by Planning Commission for approval, approval with supplementary conditions, or disapproval per Section eleven seventy-nine oh four. The applicant is requesting a conditional use approval to redevelop the zero point eight seven acre property at one oh five five eight Harrison Avenue, which is the old Taco Bell, by constructing a new Valvoline Instant Oil Change facility at the subject property. The existing vacant restaurant will be demolished and the proposed new facility would include a two-bay, one thousand four hundred and sixty-two square foot oil change facility and nine parking spaces. The proposed Valvoline oil will utilize the existing access drives to adjacent property and no new driveways are proposed on Harrison Avenue. Customers, customers will enter the service space from the north side of the building and exit to the south. The side is currently served by utilities and a mason, masonry trash enclosure will be constructed with opaque gates. The land use compatibility, the proposed use is located within a B general business zoning district and is surrounded by other B zone businesses. It is compatible with the existing adjacent non-residential uses and does not border any residential uses. The proposed use is consistent with the intent of the zoning code to provide business uses to meet the needs of the regional market. Proposed building elevations have been submitted that meet the city's building design standards. The proposed plan will reduce the amount of impervious surface area and increase the amount of landscape slash open space areas. The proposed use will not be hazardous, hazardous or disturbing to existing or future neighboring uses. The proposed use will not involve activities that will be detrimental to the area. Existing vehicular access will be used and no negative traffic impacts are expected. There are no known historical features to the property and the location size and intensity of the use is appropriate for the property in the area. The impact on adjacent property, approval of the conditional use will allow the redevelopment of a vacant and blighted building and the potential of added jobs and increased property values. The comprehensive plan goals, strategies, and recommendations. Number one, promote active redevelopment, reinvestment, and infill in aging retail corridors, and continue to recruit national and international businesses to the area. The application has been reviewed by the Harrison Building and Planning, Building, Planning and Zoning Staff and no further recommendations were made for approval. The application meets the goals and recommendations outlined in the city's comprehensive plan for the B zone and adheres to the general standards applicable to all conditional uses, which is listed below. If Planning Commission approves the conditional use permit, all zoning regulations will be met during the redevelopment and building process.
We have the applicant Jonathan, is it Wotcher?
Oh, okay. Hello. I'm a little shorter, so hopefully you can hear me, I'm a little closer to the mic. My name is Macy Downey. I'm with McBride Dale Clarion, here on behalf of Valvoline and Jonathan, who couldn't be here tonight. Let's see. So, yes, we looked through all of Joette's notes in the staff report, couldn't agree more. Really excited to be here. I'll just highlight a couple points that she mentioned. We will be replacing the vacant, what used to be the Taco Bell, that I understand has moved down the street. And with that redevelopment, we will be utilizing the existing driveways. No new access points are proposed, no direct access onto Harrison Avenue or anything like that. We'll be decreasing the pavement area and allowing more area for green space and plantings. We believe that the building proposed is quality, attractive, meets your design standards. We really believe this development will be harmonious with the existing character of the area and meet the intent of the zoning code and the comp plan. We don't anticipate any variances for this project. And, yeah, just simply request approval of the conditional use.
Is this a corporate store?
Oh, I'm sorry, I, happy to answer any questions, and I also have Robin with Valvoline here to help as well.
Okay, so this will be a corporately owned building and will be run by Valvoline Instant Oil Change Corporate. Okay. Is, because isn't there a Valvoline Instant Oil Change just down the street on Linus?
Linus?
I think it's Linus. There's already a Valvoline Instant Oil Change on Linus. And I don't think it's a corporate store, but.
It, it might be one of our express stores, and you, I'm not familiar with that location, so it could be a franchise.
It's where the car wash is at.
Correct.
Yeah, it's a franchise.
Cowen's Fast.
Yeah, Cowen, is it Cowen's or?
Yeah, Cowen's Fast Loop.
How many oil changes we got on the hill? We've got that one, we've got the one by the car wash, we've got the one across the street.
It's Minekey. And then down the street is, across from Walgreens, Jiffy Loop.
Well, let's talk about care and maintenance. Because obviously, the previous owner couldn't care less and didn't do any maintenance to the building. And I think he's out of Florida or somewhere like that. Let's talk about, because obviously, these are custom buildings. They can't be used for a restaurant or anything else. It's an oil change location. Um, let's talk about occupancy. How long, on average, are the buildings utilized? Care and upkeep of the building? Care and upkeep of the building, and whether it's the building or the grounds?
Our building, we will be entering in the lease and ten, fifteen, twenty years. We professionally maintain our buildings, landscape, irrigation, et cetera. You know.
So this building's built to suit, built to suit you, but it's going to be owned by somebody else? Okay.
Yeah. Well, we'll own the building, we're just leasing the property.
Oh, you're doing a ground lease?
Yes, we're doing a ground lease. It will be a brick, you know, a couple of different kinds of brick with a minimal amount of ethos signage on the building, a monument sign out front. As we were saying, we're going to reduce the impervious surface.
Yes, I love that part of it.
Yeah, I, yeah, just driving by and seeing it, I mean, it's all pavement there, so.
How many locations do you have that you manage in the tri-state area?
Oh, gosh. Off the top of my head.
Where's your closest one? Actually, where are your closest five?
Colrain is just about ready to open. We have one on Highland Avenue. There's a new store on Glenway. I believe there.
Just up the hill on, oh, it's on Glenway.
Yeah, it's near Starbucks.
Oh, okay.
There's one that is a couple of years old up in the Mason, West Liberty area. Many in the Dayton area, Indianapolis, Indiana.
Other questions?
Just operationally, you know, we don't have any overnight parking. The parking is for our employees only, so everything that we do is done inside the building.
That's my next question.
Yeah, it's all done inside the building. We are a low-traffic generator, forty, fifty cars a day. Like I said, our technicians will greet a customer and, you know, ten, fifteen minutes for an oil change. If our customers have to wait longer than that, if they see two or three cars, you know, waiting, they don't want to wait for a half hour to forty-five minutes, so they'll come back, our technicians will go out, talk to them, maybe tell them when it's a convenient time, you know, for them to come back. So we don't, we don't have a lot going on in our lot, you know.
How many lifts do you have in the store?
We don't have any lifts. Everything is done from below.
Okay.
In the basement.
So how many do you have of those?
This will have two. This will have two.
Anyone else have any questions? Any questions from the floor?
We've got as many oil changes as we do pizza parlors.
Sounds like a good thing to me.
Yeah.
Sounds like a good thing to me.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies.
All right, this concludes our second public hearing, and we will move on to the Harrison, the planning commission meeting. Do we need a short little agenda? Anyone need a break? Okay. Or go straight into it? Let's do the pledge of allegiance, please.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Joette, may we have the roll call?
Mr. Wilson?
Here.
Mr. Graff?
Here.
Mayor Grubbs?
Here.
Ms. Knock?
Here.
Mr. McMurdo?
Here.
We need to approve the minutes for the August twelfth, two thousand twenty-five meeting.
So move. Second.
Mr. Graff?
Yay.
Mayor Grubbs?
Yay.
Ms. Knock?
Yay.
Mr. McMurdo?
Yeah.
Mr. Wilson?
Yay.
We have our visitors here that are in our new business, so just move straight on to that. Our first order of new business is for the record plat approval. It's a replat of lots three and four of the trailhead, section one H.
The applicant is requesting approval to define two transferable parcels within lots three and four, section one, block H of the trailhead development. This will allow the sale of each individual unit of a two-unit dwelling. The new division line will be established within the common wall of the unit and has been field-located to verify its location. The updated lot consists of the residential dwelling unit and the property up to the original lot line. Upon approval, the record plat will be recorded at the Hamilton County Recorder's Office per typical subdivision procedure, and deeds will be recorded to transfer the lot as sold. The application has been reviewed and approved by Harrison zoning department and the city of Harrison engineer, and no conditions were recommended.
Make a motion to approve. Second.
Ms. Knock?
Yay.
Mr. McMurdo?
Yeah.
Mr. Wilson?
Yeah.
Mr. Graff?
Yeah.
Mayor Grubbs?
Yeah.
Mission approved.
Moving on to the zoning and use permit approval for one, we're one fifteen North Sycamore, a pet grooming salon.
The reason for the request is the applicant is required to submit a zoning and use permit to open a business in the downtown redevelopment district. These permits cannot be issued until approved by planning commission under section eleven forty-three oh six B. If this request is approved by planning commission, the applicant intends to open Bark Avenue Pet Spa specializing in bathing, grooming, and styling pets. The spa will have up to six employees on site and operate Monday through Saturday from nine AM until five PM. The building is two stories with retail on the first story and living space on the second story. The proposed space is only one story, which the applicant intends to use to operate the business. No outdoor lighting plan is proposed, no landscape plan is proposed, on-street parking is available in front and on the side of the building, and public parking is available behind the building. No proposed signage was submitted with the application. The application has been reviewed by the Harrison planning and zoning staff and meets the Harrison zoning regulations per section eleven forty-three C eleven, which states, barber shops, beauty salons, pet grooming, and similar personal and pet service shops as a permitted use. The application also meets the intention of the downtown strategic plan. If planning commission approves the application, the building and zoning department would recommend the following conditions. All waste associated with the business shall be disposed of using residential-style waste containers. Any dumpster that is used in the future shall require review and approval by the building and zoning department. Any future structural interior or exterior improvements will require a building permit presented to the building and zoning department for review and approval. Any outside design changes, such as painting of the building or trim, will require a zoning permit filed with the building and zoning department to ensure they are in keeping with the historical nature of the DRD. Any future signage will be submitted to the building and zoning department for review and approval according to the Harrison zoning regulations, and any future landscaping will be maintained in accordance with the Harrison zoning regulations.
Ms. Amanda? Do you currently operate out of another location right now? See? It should be an easy conversion, having had a pet groomer in there prior to you moving into the location. I like the Bark Avenue.
I do too. I do too.
That's when I started laughing at it. Oh, did he?
Is this the same store that had a grooming before?
They have one behind it.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
They have one behind it.
Okay.
Oh, so you're taking the front space?
We're, we're on the rocks.
Yes.
Oh. Okay. That's part.
Oh, okay.
I'm still confused.
They're taking this part of, on the rocks.
With the barbed?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I'm just curious, because I know that other one wasn't there very long. I don't know if it's just.
She had some children and then spent a week there.
Motion approved. With conditions? Oh, yeah, yes.
Second?
I'll second.
Will we still be able to get a drink when the dog's getting? Just curious.
It isn't working there, so.
Just go across the street to Valley House. Bring your door cup.
You can drink all the water you want, Jerry.
Mr. McMurdo?
Yay.
Mr. Wilson?
Yay.
Mr. Graff?
Yay.
Mayor Grubbs?
Yay.
Ms. Knock?
Yay.
Mission approved.
Our next order of business is the development permit review for May Drive Spec Building.
Some of you, I think, might be missing this one, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna pass it down. And there should be one more. Thank you.
Do you have another one?
We'll share.
Any of you have one, right?
Yeah, I got one.
Okay, all right. The applicant has submitted a development permit to build a twelve-thousand-square-foot spec building on vacant land. The applications for development of vacant land are reviewed by planning commission for recommendations and to keep planning commission informed of all new developments to ensure the development is following the intent of the comprehensive plan. The proposed building will be steel with a mix of glass storefront, steel facade, and masonry bottom facade. The purpose of the M-one, the, I'm sorry, this is the zoning section. The purpose of the M-one restricted industrial district is to provide for industrial uses having a minimum impact upon the surrounding environment in areas which are suitable for restricted or light manufacturing operations, warehousing operations, and the like. The use of this M-one property for small, light industrial buildings was intended for this area, according to the city of Harrison comprehensive plan. Future tenants in the proposed building will meet the permitted use requirements as outlined in section eleven forty-three oh seven A of the Harrison zoning regulations. One of the goals of the city's comprehensive plan is to preserve the industrial corridor and available land which is zoned for industrial development. This proposed business adheres to that goal by providing light industrial use in an already established industrial park and is in keeping with the surrounding area or surrounding uses. A conceptual review of the development plan has been completed by Harrison planning and zoning staff. The development fits the Harrison zoning regulations and does not require any special approvals. The full development plan will be reviewed and approved by the city engineer, and all building and zoning plans will be reviewed and approved by the Harrison building and zoning department, including setbacks, parking, waste disposal, landscaping, lighting, and height requirements. Any future signage will be submitted to the building and zoning department for review and approval according to the Harrison zoning regulations. And that application is really just for comment, not vote?
I don't have any comments. It seems very appropriate.
It's very straightforward.
What do you say?
I'm not a spec build fan, so I have no other comments.
No comments?
Is there anybody here to talk forward?
Yes. Is Greg Henchold of GLOH here? Hi.
Do you have any potential tenants?
No, is he gonna say anything?
Right now, no, we don't have. It hasn't been advertised, so. So, but the last building we built, as soon as we advertised it, it fell off.
Well, that's a good sweet spot, space-wise, but.
Well, now, square footage of buildings are in demand. That's, that's probably the highest demand.
What kind of business do you see being there?
Light industrial warehousing.
Metal fabrication.
Contractors.
And you don't see it being a long time to get it rented? Because we've had that problem already.
I would buy any twelve-thousand square.
That was a little, this one, but, well, ours, the one we had a little problem with was a little bit larger. Five hundred-some thousand square feet. And we've cut all kind of hell over that. Okay, that's all I wanted to know.
Any other questions for him? All right, thank you. Moving on, we have the PUD preliminary plan recommendation to council for one zero four zero zero Harrison Avenue, the proposed retail development.
Do you want to read this again?
Do we need to get it on the record?
Yes.
I guess we do in the regular meeting, yeah.
The application, PUD preliminary, preliminary plan approval for one zero four four zero Harrison Avenue. The application must be reviewed and approved by planning commission per section eleven forty-three ten F of the Harrison zoning regulations, which lists the applicant shall submit a preliminary development plan describing the project in detail to the planning commission. The applicant is requesting the approval of a PUD biz overlay on a B general business end property to develop a retail development. The applicant plans to build a retail development on the twenty-four point one five acres located at one oh four zero zero Harrison Avenue. The proposed development will consist of a large anchor tenant located on ten point seven four acres, inline retail located on eight point eight one acres, and four out parcels totaling close to five acres. The proposed use is located within a B general business zoning district and is surrounded by other B zone businesses. It is compatible with the existing adjacent non-residential uses. The proposed use is consistent with the intent of the zoning code to provide business uses to meet the needs of a regional market. Proposed building elevations have been submitted to meet the city's building design standards. The proposed use will not be hazardous or disturbing to existing or future neighboring uses. The proposed use will not involve activities that will be detrimental to the area. The vehicle access will be strategically planned out and no negative traffic impacts are expected. The location size and intensity of the use is appropriate for the property in the area. Comprehensive plan, goals, strategies, and recommendations. Number one, recruit the retail, restaurant, and entertainment environments that will enhance community and quality of life experience. Number two, continue to recruit national and international businesses to the area. And number three, fill the demand for additional convenience retail and restaurants along Harrison Avenue. The PUD terms are certain conditional uses move to permitted uses and increase in amount of square footage of signage. Summary and recommendation, the application has been reviewed by the Harrison building, planning, and zoning staff, and no further recommendations were made for approval. The application was also reviewed by the city engineer with general site comments. That will be addressed before the presentation of the final plan. The application meets the criteria outlined in the Harrison zoning regulations for the PUD preliminary development plan and the goal, strategy, and recommendations of the city's comprehensive plan. After review of the application, planning commission will vote to recommend full approval, approval with conditions, or denial to city council. Development agreement will be created and signed by the city and the applicant outlining the terms of the PUD biz overlay and presented for approval by city council with the final development plan.
Any questions, discussion?
My, my only concern here is just making sure we're clear what we're recommending on this. So what I would like to do is make a motion to approve the proposed site plan and the elevations we've got here with conditional approval of, of those subject to a continued negotiation of the conditional and permitted uses as presented. Yeah, continue. That needs to be fleshed out a little bit more is my concern there.
Wilson, second.
Ms. Knock?
Yay.
Mr. McMurdo?
Yeah.
Mr. Wilson?
Yeah.
Mr. Graff?
Yeah.
Mayor Grubbs?
Yeah.
Mission approved. With conditions.
And finally, we have a PUD preliminary plan, or excuse me, sorry, we just did that one. The conditional use permit approval for one zero five five eight Harrison Avenue for Valvoline Oil.
The, this application must be reviewed and approved by planning commission per section. by planning commission per section 114305c of the Harrison zoning regulation, which lists any automotive use, including automotive supply, gas stations, service stations, repair garages, car washes, and automotive sales in service as a conditional use. All proposed conditional use permits are reviewed by planning commission for approval. Approval with supplementary, supplementary conditions or disapproval per section 117904. The applicant is requesting a conditional use approval to redevelop the 0.87-acre property at 10558 Harrison Avenue, which is the old Taco Bell, by constructing a new Valvoline instant oil change facility at the subject property. The existing vacant restaurant will be demolished, and the proposed new facility would include a two-bay, 1,462-square-foot oil change facility, and nine parking spaces. The proposed Valvoline Oil will utilize the existing access drives to adjacent property, and no new driveways are proposed on Harrison Avenue. Customers will enter the service space from the north side of the building and exit to the south. The site is currently served by utilities, and a mason, masonry trash enclosure will be constructed with opaque gates. Um, land use cap, compatibility of the proposed use is located within a B general business zoning district and is surrounded by other B-zone businesses. It is compatible with the existing adjacent non-residential uses and does not border any residential uses. The proposed use is consistent with the intent of the zoning code to provide business uses to meet the needs of the regional market. Proposed building elevations have been submitted that meet the city's building design standards. The proposed plan will reduce the amount of impervious surface area and increase the amount of landscape slash open spaces. The proposed use will not be hazardous or disturbing to existing or future neighboring uses. The proposed use will not involve activities that will be detrimental to the area. Existing vehicular accesses will be used, and no negative traffic impacts are expected. There are no known historic features on the property, and the location, size, intensity of the use is appropriate for the property in the area. Um, approval of the conditional use will allow the redevelopment of a vacant and blighted building and the potential of added jobs and increased property values. Um, comprehensive plan goals, strategies, and recommendations. Number one, promote active redevelopment, reinvestment, and infill and aging retail corridors. And number two, continue to recruit national and international businesses to the area. The application has been reviewed by the Harrison Building, Planning, and Zoning staff, and no further recommendations were made for approval. The application meets the goals and recommendations outlined in the city's comprehensive plan for the B-zone and adheres to the general standards applicable to all conditional uses. If planning commission approves the conditional use permit, all zoning regulations will be met during the redevelopment and building process.
What do you think?
Do we need to have a discussion, or anyone want to make a motion?
I'm concerned about having two competing Valvolines very close together. Generally, on, on this property, I think anything's better than a dilapidated Taco Bell, but, um, you know, do, do we want something like this there long-term? Particularly when there's one right down the street would be my concern.
That's exactly my concern. One, have an automotive sitting right out on the front.
Right.
And, two, having a Valvoline right down the street with, what, two or three other oil change places almost on the same exact strip. I'm torn on it meeting the comprehensive plan.
What's the name of the one next to the gas station across from Backs?
That's a...
That's...
A mobile.
It's not a Valvoline. I'm pretty sure it's not a Valvoline.
Quickie, quick, uh, uh...
Not a Quick Lube, is it?
It's a Quick, I mean, it's not a, I think it's like privately owned, but it's a mobile one. It's a quick, quick oil change, so...
I guess you think that, I don't know, uh, I'm concerned with all the Val, all the oil change companies being able to make money. I mean, how many, how many you need?
Finns, Quick Lube.
We, our market analysis says that we can support the, the, basically, all of them in the area, including the one that, uh, is close by.
Right now, there's, that would be, yours would be five within, what, two blocks, three blocks?
There could be one. Our, our, uh, research shows that there is a need in this, in this area, and that, you know, we can support that need.
That doesn't even, that doesn't even count the one that, uh, um, what's the one across from, uh, in front of the Mexican restaurant? Tire company?
Oh.
Tire, Tire Discounters, Tire Discounters.
Tire Discounters, I mean?
They, they, their focus is tires. Yes, they do oil changes, but, but we just specifically do oil changes.
I understand that, I just...
I, I also worry about if it would be, if it would inhibit other folks in the center.
Inhibit other folks in the center, we'd need...
Well, one, one of our characteristics is, or one of our criteria is odors, glares, et cetera. Uh, you know, it's a nice building. Um, I, I like the appearance and all, but you're gonna get odors from a oil change place.
The only other problem that we've run into is the size of that lot and the potential to redevelop it as anything else.
It sucks, I know.
Yeah.
It, it does. So I am, I'm torn...
Right.
With getting rid of that dilapidated old building and putting this up. Or that dilapidated old building sitting there until it falls in.
Right, I understand, yeah.
Because we have, we've tried everything from the zoning perspective, but, um...
I mean, the, the public seems to think that there'd like to be a restaurant there.
It's not big enough.
It's not bad.
No, I mean, if, not, not that building.
No.
But a new building.
Well, it could be a Kona Ice.
Be what?
A Kona Ice. You know, the little ice...
Kona Ice?
The little ice things that are at our street festivals and everything? That's about how big that lot is.
Oh, that's right, that's on the other side of the building. Also, if you build a restaurant there, you couldn't use the rest of the lot for parking? Get an agreement?
It can't be driven by shared parking, I don't think, can it?
What do you mean driven?
So, if you have a building, you have to be able to have so much parking available. It can't be driven by an adjoining parking lot, right?
Well, the beer, the, uh, breweries got an agreement on shared parking?
They can use parking, but they have their own parking.
They have their own, but if they need overflow, they have a shared...
Yeah.
Where they can share the, uh, all the lot by McDonald's and that.
Yeah.
Yeah, but with this lot, you're probably gonna get six spaces.
That, that's what they have designed, is six, seven spaces.
Yeah, we have nine, that's just...
Nine spaces.
Nine, yeah.
But, I mean, our, our customers don't need parking. They, they come in for service, and they stay in their car. So those parking places are only for...
I understand that. Forever.
It's probably been...
Oh, God, it's been longer.
It's been lo, it's been empty longer than five years.
It's close to eight, I think.
Yeah.
It's been empty that long.
About eight years, nine years?
Maybe over eight, actually, yeah, between eight and nine, yeah.
And then, then we have one time have a problem with the owner of that. He wanted to be kind of demanding, if I'm not mistaken?
I'm sorry?
Did the owner at one time tell us that we didn't do, let him do something with it?
Yeah, but they since sold it to some company out of Florida or something like that. Some company owns it out of Florida now, and they're impossible to get hold of.
Now, the good news if it's approved, it'll be a better-looking building, huh?
Yeah.
Of course, it couldn't be no, no uglier.
No, they do. The Valvoline buildings are nice buildings. All the ones that I've seen are well-taken care of. The corporate stores, they're well-taken care of, everything along those lines. I, I, my only hang-up is automotive sitting out up on the front, taking up a key piece of retail real estate, but then I'm torn with how small the lot is and being able to do anything else with it in another eight to 10 years of that Taco Bell sitting there.
If I could just kind of make it back to the initial standards, because we would make a lot of, that would be the surrounding properties around, affect them. Um, all, as, as you mentioned, all services are in the building. There are whole floors, um, the, the, uh, we don't, we don't anticipate any, you know, overscreaming overs in the adjacent rental lots. Uh, everything is screened, the dumpsters screened, um, as, as my guidelines. Um, and, uh, we, we don't anticipate any excess traffic. You know, there was a Taco Bell here at one point, which I'm sure generated much more traffic than the Valvoline. You know, um, really make that be very beneficial.
So, what, so what you're saying, it does fit within the comprehensive plan?
It does for that area, as a conditional use.
Under a conditional use?
As a conditional use. It fits the criteria for a conditional use, let's put it that way.
I don't think there's a specific reason not. I'm having trouble with that.
That's the problem, too.
And I can have my reservations all I want, but I, I can't think of a new one. So I will make a motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Wilson?
I just, I don't know, I just, I just wonder how many oil change places you need in Harrison, especially within a three-block area? No.
Mr. Graff?
I'm torn on this one. Because I'm concerned about odors and, um, detrimental to neighboring properties. I'll vote nay as well.
Mayor Grubbs? Yay. Ms. Knock?
I'm concerned with having two Valvolines, you know, and what the, bringing in a new one would do to the, the one we currently have. But given that, uh, there is nothing in the, you know, zoning that's, you know, you're meeting all the criteria, so I'm gonna vote yay.
Mr. McMurdo?
Yay.
Okay, message passes.
There you go.
Um, we have no old business, so, um, the motion for adjournment?
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you, everyone.
We're adjourned.